Calling another time that I.
No, I slipped on ice. I was holding a saddle.
I was in the top of it.
Everywhere.
There's some good videos that we get of us falling down in front of our cars in the winter time. We usually save those for ourselves.
I'm not sure that it wasn't within the scope of the city's cameras and that there was video out there, so.
It was my fault. Should I turn it off?
Yeah.
Give us a guess at this song. Well, it's Annie.
Yep.
I don't know the song, but it's.
I don't have that light.
Dumb dog.
Oh, which is.
I listen to Broadway too sometimes.
That's awesome.
It's a very distinctive voice. I know that.
Yes.
That's the original one. Not the remake and not the TV one. That was the first movie I saw in the theater.
Was it?
Funny, I've never seen that movie.
Oh. Do you have a DVD? Please tell me you got a DVD.
Two different kinds. And then you could compare it to that.
Okay, we don't have a DVD.
Over that. Neither do I, but it didn't suffer from rain. It's not the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, Annie, next week.
Yeah.
Two weeks from now.
I'm gonna like the Cali beats.
Of an Annie.
No, I think I was Caroler yet. That's the. This is a classic. I was actually just talking to someone last week about.
I was gonna say, I think we had that NHS too.
The differences between stage and movie musicals.
Is there anybody else who hasn't seen Annie?
I don't think I've seen it.
Nobody else.
But like the stage, the stage production of Annie is.
I'm sure.
Are you scared?
Yes, like the depression.
Yeah, there was.
Over bills. Yeah, and the cabinet.
Oh, unshaming. And maybe it was an episode when I saw.
All right, it's 5:30. Enough movie talk. I'll call this meeting in order. A work session for August 18th. First is we have the monthly sheriff's office report. Deputy Nelson, how are you?
Thank you, I'm good. How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Couple of things coming up. Biggest one will be Steamboat. Still, I sent off my final draft to the Steamboat Case Commission and then also my administration. So tentatively, I'm thinking it's gonna be fine. We didn't make many difference, many changes from last year's staffing requirements other than a request for some parade traffic control on Sunday. So we're allotting for a couple extra hours of some deputies covering some corners and helping some traffic flow. But otherwise, that's in full swing. We're excited for that to come up. Be here before we know it. Staffing wise, we're still at a team of four. We still have two vacancies. We're missing our Team One Night Car and our Team Two Power Park. We currently have three deputies on field training that are progressing nicely. We have three more starting within August and September. And we have four additional deputies in the background phase. So lots of hiring, lots of movement. Hopefully, we can bring those staffing numbers up here towards the end. It'd be really nice to get our contract filled out. The County Road 11 roundabout that everybody I'm sure is aware of, Pioneer and Marshall Lake. I mention that because it's like our main thoroughfare between the cities of Victorian Harbor. And right now, my response time is drastically increased with that detour. So I'm looking forward to that being done. Unfortunately, it looks like they hit a snag this last week. But tentatively, I'm hoping within the next, I don't know, couple of weeks that they get that done. That'd be great.
Have you heard a new date?
No, all I, all I have is just the August 11th update where they hit some groundwater and then had to tear more stuff back up. So I know it's, it is nice though, and I will say it's passable for us in an emergency situation right now. So I mean, if we've got, you know, serious threat of life or harm or whatever, I'm gonna turn the lights on. I can go that way. And I'm confident I can get through there without causing a havoc or anything like that. So as far as a review of our July numbers, I made a couple of notes and compared some previous numbers. We were actually down this month in total calls for service from June. June was our 154. In May, we had 148. But we're, we're pulled right around that same number. We had 138 in July. Traffic stops are staying relatively the same. Looks like we did 31. And then in the other months, we were around the 40 number.
Do you look at your year over year for those stats? Do you look at your year over year for those stats?
I had not looked at them, no.
I just pulled up some. How we trend over time.
Yeah, I think that that report is probably out there somewhere. It's definitely information I could access. And I'll make a note of that. It'd be interesting to see. I'm curious as well. I just pulled up some previous months just to see kind of where we were going. I don't have any notable calls for service that I can recall. Anything that was super alarming or maybe caused some notice by citizens or anything like that. But if anybody does have any questions about something that somebody approached them with, I'm open to trying to explain any of that. Other than that, though, I don't really have much else.
Questions?
Not on the report. A question for you, though. Are you open or anyone that services our city open to a ride along sometime? I'd like to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who would you like me to contact?
Who? Well, I can work with you directly and I just gotta get you a form.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's all I need to do. And then we can hash it out if you want to ride with either me or Logan, or you want to do some night shift stuff. We can put you with anybody you'd like.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'll make a note to get to.
We'll find you.
I have a request. You mentioned the Steamboat Days and that we'll have extra coverage. We're starting to look at next year's budget and there's a dollar amount in there. I would really take your input on if you think we need more coverage after experiencing this year. I don't ever see cutting back, but.
Okay, for Steamboat Days specifically?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And this being my first year, unfortunately, I'm coming into it a little bit, you know, blind as far as.
It's kind of nice to have a fresh perspective.
So, you know, when I went through and I approached the commission and a few different members of the city and things like that to say, hey, this is what we did last year. Is this, are we still comfortable with this? You know, do we need more? What happened, right? And the general consensus was we were okay with what we had. Just some provisions for the parade, it sounds like, was a bit of an issue, so. But yeah, definitely keep that in mind.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, up next, we've got Draft One, the 2026 General Fund Budget. Ms. Shugam's trick.
Thank you.
Also.
Second one doesn't say Draft One of X.
Sorry, you didn't roll me the rolls.
So exciting to kind of, you know, we did a budget kickoff in the spring of the year. Herdland just kind of presented, but have a lot more information to share. Probably one of several budget conversations the council will have. And kind of an editorial comment, this, I feel like is probably the most significant kind of policy document in a way that the council has before them. Uncommon in recent years, frankly, I can't remember the last year, we didn't have either debt service or adding a full-time employee. And on top of that, we're not adding any additional part-time spots as well. So that creates a set of opportunities and paths for the council to choose from. Some of the things that we were thinking of as a team, bringing this first draft to you, is generally just awareness and sensitivity to the needs of a growing organization. And then also that balance of property tax impacts. It's more of an art than a science. And so that's where the council's input really comes in to be beneficial to the process. Another piece, the strategic initiative to limit the tax rate impact to 3%. And that's either plus or minus. 3%, kind of, part getting back to that, just with the goal of not having roller coaster type of budget impacts where one year it's a cut, one next year it's a big increase. We did get information from Carver County at 3 o'clock this afternoon. So Lynn did a great job of doing the calculations for that. So we have some information to share there. As well as a strategic initiative to continue to build cash for capital contributions. And then finally, I would also offer another unique goal is to use positive fund balance that we discussed in our last work session as a means to develop cash payments for development of a future public services facility without impacting the levy. So and Lynn will be touching on this and she's got a PowerPoint prepared that's also in the packet. But I think it's noteworthy just to kind of reinforce to the council and those that are watching that, excuse me, the city really operates two separate businesses. And as such, we have two separate processes for the budget process. So the general fund, which we're talking about tonight, is primarily paid through property taxes. So that's the basic, I would say, services that most people recognize with the city. So police service, fire service, parks, streets, elections, legal, assessing accounting. And it runs the gamut. And so, you know, under that process, the council seeking to develop a ceiling for the preliminary levy by the end of September. You have a truth in taxation hearing at the first meeting in December. Notices prior to that meeting are sent out to residents notifying them of the potential change to their property taxes, not only for the city, but for the county, the school district, and some other taxing agencies such as the Met Council. The other business that we have is the water and sewer utility business. And so that one, you'll be getting the budget for what we call the enterprise funds later in the fall. But they're primarily paid through monthly utility bills and connection fees paid through by developers. And only emphasizing this because although it essentially comes out of the safe pocket for our residents or property taxpayers or consumers of the utilities, they do have separate processes. So oftentimes, Ashley or other folks up front will get calls like related to like, I have to pay this water bill, but we're to buy property tax going. And sometimes that distinction and that difference is helpful. But I also say again, like I said previously, that it is the same person that's paying that bill, but where it's going to is sometimes helpful in determining how to help them solve a problem or understand where their money is going. So does that clear to everybody on those distinctions? So this is kind of a basic rundown of where we're at with Draft One. We're expecting and anticipating the council to have feedback and want to make some changes of our general revenue. So that's essentially our, excuse me, our operations. And then debt services, money that the city has previously borrowed. And then we're on a kind of a traditional, what we call a debt service schedule or what I think most people would just prefer to as loan repayment. In the past few years, we've developed additional categories. One into streets or street maintenance. This was kind of originated from a conversation that happened right before COVID took hold, where the city was contemplating franchise fees. Pretty strong opposition in the community related to that. And the council made a decision to shell franchise fees in favor of levy for street maintenance. And then to kind of further create that transparency, we've segregated that out into a special levy fund so people can kind of track where that goes. And then following kind of that same model, segregating out of capital. And so that's built out into several different categories. Public works, fire department or public services, fire department, parks, and facilities. So we'll kind of get into that as we move forward. One of the pieces that, why you'll see kind of that big increase that we discussed earlier and I kind of lifted language from the past work session is that taking excess fund balance in some of those debt service funds that would eventually be given back to the general fund and dedicating that towards anticipated future professional service fees for the development to a 60% plan review for public services. So that'll give us, I would say, more defined cost estimates in a building plan that we can take out to residents to do community engagement, for the council to review and critique, and at any other stakeholders that want to influence the process, so.
I can ask a question on that one?
Yeah.
Is that specific to that project or we want to get towards that for all projects?
It's specific to this project. I would say like in general, if we had the choice between paying cash or borrowing, it would be cash. But I think as you, as I kind of transition into kind of the capital levy, there are, you know, I think we're taking a moderately aggressive track to like build those capital funds. So it's a matter of, I mean, you could certainly do that. It's just at what cost and what priorities you want to choose from.
And sorry, I should have been more specific. I mean, the pre-designed, that being at 60% of a undesigned development, like, is that more like, we're 60% sure of our, what our development plan is? For that, for all projects?
Yeah, I think.
Or just for that?
Just for a public services project. So they'll, they'll develop plans through an engineering review, architectural, soil borings, construction management. And there'll be some, a pretty good degree of certainty of like what the project would look like, what it would cost. But rather than doing that last 40% that gets you to the point where you can do construction drawings, it'll get you to the point where it's like, okay, this is generally what we want to build. This is generally what it would cost. But just for that project.
Okay.
So a little bit of our levy history here, so you can kind of track. At this first draft, we're at an 11.39% increase. And that's the collection of that general revenue, debt service, streets, and capital. So as you can see in that kind of table above, those categories have switched out. But we're, you know, for this application, really focusing on that bottom line number. So that's the 558,000 and change number. Then you can see how correspondingly, going back to 2017, how our levy has fluctuated. We also built on some levy scenarios, so. And we can, you know, if you give us some definition, we can play out different tax impact scenarios related to this. But this gives you some idea of what you need to cut to get to different levy increases. And so our hope is that we can kind of give you some line of sight to some things that may be of interest to you. But we can drill down into any one of those, any one of the line item categories that you'd like. We have our department head team here tonight to get into any question that you have. The capital plan, so the city has a strategic initiative to increase cash by 10%. This draft shows an increase of 44%, which I would offer as somewhat misleading in that our numbers, especially in public services, fire, parks, and facilities has been so low that really any increase shows by percentage a lot. And this show like on facilities, we segregated out the church by the river repairs. When you go from 0 to 30,000 or even 0 to 10,000, it would still be a 100% increase. You can see that this, I did separate the special facilities out. So that's the number that we would have kind of saved away to help pay for professional design services related to the future public services buildings. And then just kind of running through what, so that's kind of the savings end. But what would actually be spent out? You can see the street maintenance projects planned for 2026. So that comes out of the street maintenance fund. The 969 comes out of state aid, which the city receives annually. 145,000 in public services. And you'll be getting some additional detail on that from Andrew tonight. 45,000 for extrication equipment. Again, Chief Walsh will be discussing that. You don't have any projects planned in parks or facilities. Again, getting back to, you know, where these contributions are. It's building cash, kind of like a savings account. So that when you have those planned years, you have the cash to make that. And with the exception of a ladder in like 2031, this plan is billed off of, you know, a cash basis. Meaning that rather than doing the equipment certificates that the city's been doing every three to five years, the plans that you'll see tonight from Chief Walsh and Andrew, and frankly, in parks as well, all get paid through via cash, which is a pretty significant financial departure from how we've been funding capital projects in the past. Moving forward, I'm just gonna kind of highlight some of these pieces. We, the employee health insurance right now is our best estimate. We won't be giving real information till later on in the fall. This Minnesota paid leave premiums is really a tough one, I would say. Knowing that I think the, frankly, I think the city does a great job of providing paid leave opportunities organizationally. But the state created this new leave program, which would then be in addition to what we provide. But fundamentally, that what you're paying into funds the entire statewide program. So if you remember, it was one of the city's legislative priorities to, at a minimum, have cities exempt from that new law. But to no avail. One of the things that's a little bit newer here is for many years, just based on interest earnings, when the city has increased the pension contribution in the fire department, it came with no additional contribution in the form of a budget increase. We're proposing, or Draft One of the budget proposes a $300 increase to the per year of service contribution to the retirement. That comes at a $20,000 contribution expectation to fund that. By contrast, if, you know, we've done 1,000 in the past couple of years, that would require a $60,000 contribution. So and then moving, we've talked a little bit about the full-time. I kind of, I went past that, but we talked about that at the previous meetings. We can get into that if you'd like. But we're essentially mimicking on part-time what we would do for full-time under this current model anyway. So that's a 3/4% increase. Fundamentally, you know, the part-time wage earners are going to be paid less. So that's why you're at a dollar amount that's maybe smaller than maybe what you would have expected for part-time. A couple of community outreach programs. The farmer's market, something that Brenda Good and Aaron Smith worked on in coordination with the Chamber. They have a partnership where they essentially kind of run that program on the Carver station. So that's for marketing and coordination. It was $5,000 last year. They're asking for a $3,000 increase. Prime is a, Southwest Prime is, I would say, a pretty consistent topic of conversation in this room by the council. I think we're, as a city, we're in a kind of a unique position as I think there's a lot of conversation related to how that's going to be funded in the future. The county and Southwest Transit is arguing a mobility study for the county. We have a meeting scheduled with Carver County in early September to talk about possible funding opportunities that they have related to transit and specifically micro-transit. So I would say those pieces are in flux along with some of the information that the council learned from Smart Link. I think that was new information. As it relates to kind of the budget specifically, even with a dollar increase to the city's rideshare contribution and a 10% increase in annual ridership, 45,000 appears to be more than enough to fund that service in 2026. The Chaska Recreation Partnership runs through 2027. There's a formula based on population growth and inflation that gets us to that new 93,000 number, which is just about a $6,000 increase from 2025. Spring cleanup, Steamboat Days law enforcement. And then just highlighting some strategic plan initiatives related to comprehensive plan support and commercial industrial parking plan.
Hey, Brent?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Before I go any further, $5,000 to $8,000 for a farmer's market, do you know what we're getting? It was, it was six.
Yeah, we started at six.
Six, okay.
It was five this year, then they asked for an additional $1,000.
They asked for eight this year. We settled at six.
And they're asking for eight for 2026, correct? Do we know what we're getting?
They're just looking to cover more of their costs.
It runs longer than it had in the past here in Carver. Right. And then to get more to cover advertising type things and the flags that they buy. Thank you.
Have we seen Chaska give us a projection, and I'm sure we have, on what that upcoming community center cost is after their bigger remodel?
They have not. They have shared kind of informally that they are going to have a desire to kind of rebuild what a recreation partnership looks like in light of that, whatever investment they are settling on. But that hasn't been formally shared as far as cost impact or anything related to that. So kind of a basic fund overview from '25 to '26. This is, I would say, the new, latest and greatest as it relates to tax levy. So again, this is information we got this afternoon from Carver County. So levy, I think the biggest piece that I would kind of hone in on is that tax rate. So right now on Draft One, you're at 1% rounded up. And that's taking a home that was valued at 4335 and 25 and forecasting that they would go up based on what an average value home would go up to 453100. And again, that's the average, meaning that some homes aren't going to go up that much. Some homes might go up more or less. And so one of the nice things that Lynn does in the truth in taxation hearing is she'll take a cross-section of different properties so you can see the varying impacts to different homes as a cross-section. But using that average, we're at about 1125 a month of increase or 135 annually. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn to share some additional details from the budget. And then we'll open it up to the council for a more dedicated discussion.
Just one part from your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
No increase in the law enforcement contract?
No.
Is that weird that there's no increase or does that flow in there to your cycles of the contract?
It's not usual and frankly, I mean, from a practical standpoint.
I'm not complaining, to be clear.
From a practical standpoint, we've been for, at least the last three to four years, like are significantly under budget or we get like a vacant shift rebate. We're expecting, just in light of Deputy Nelson's commentary tonight, we'll get some rebate for that. But I don't know the, you know, all the detailed mechanics behind that cost formulation other than Commander Wollin sent out, you know, the 2026 proposal and that's how it aligned with 2025.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I, thank you, Brent, for the good introduction. And I'll just be kind of putting this into pictures and summarizing a little bit more of what he said regarding the general fund draft one budget. So again, the budget process, we are kind of circling down toward the September 15 date where we will be asking council to take a really good look at the levy and the budget because we will need to certify it to the county by the end of September. So for general fund revenues, you think of the property tax revenue as being like kind of your number one. And that's where we're asking residents, you know, to kind of fund the operations of the city. Building permits always comes in as kind of our second biggest, you know, moneymaker, I guess you could say. And then we get a lot of grants and aids as well. And then we have two fire contracts. We have Dalgrin and then San Francisco that we provide fire service to. So that's what those rural fire contracts are. The rest are just licenses and fees and then some miscellaneous revenue. So we're looking at, we're estimating about $4.3 million in revenue. And of course, in the general fund, your budget always balances. So 4.3 million in expenses you'll see as well, so. And then there's a graph on the right for the visual folks. So we're estimating about a 9% increase in revenues and expenses over last year. So here, I like to compare the '26 to the '25 in the different categories. So you can see that we are tracking a little bit more of an increase in the building permits. Just new developments coming in. And this second half of the summer, I just feel like, you know, we've been doing a little bit better. So we did bump that number up a little bit more. And then you can see the rest with the licenses and fees and then just overall the 9%.
We've always previously done kind of conservative building permit estimates. Would you say that this is still in that category?
I would say yes. Yep.
The licenses and fees, a 30% increase, is that from just more licenses being pulled or an increase that we made at the structure?
So a little bit of both.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are increasing our, like our. Yeah, so we are increasing our, like our license fees, so that'll play a little bit of a part in it. And then also the rental fees have really increased and I think we've undershot that a little bit in the past, and so just kind of truing up those numbers, so. And I just am calling out the different departments just to kind of remind council that we have the administration department, which is also elections and council, the general government, building inspections, planning, public services, fire department, law enforcement, which of course we contract with Carver County. And then we lump all of our contracted services into one, but that also includes our auditor, legal, engineering, assessor, and then the parks and rec.
This one, piece on this, you know, many of the things that you see on here with some exceptions, like police and fire, but like whether it's contracted services or admin is prorated based on what like an employee would do in a certain fund. So like, for example, Lynn's wages would go part to the general fund, let's say 6% to the general fund, 30% to water and 10% to sewer. So there's prorations of contained admin in these main items that you see in the budget.
That's a really good point. Thank you. So just some general impacts and Brent did touch on a lot, most of these, so I'll just kind of cruise through them if you want me to stop, just speak up. For the personnel, the 3.75 planned increase to the pay scale, that's just a market adjustment. So we move our scale based on market, you know, a few different factors. And I think Brent went over that a couple of work sessions ago. So just if we take all of the current employees right now and then we moved that scale and we look at 2026, that would be your number, $44,000 impact just to the general fund budget. So then the next line says, "A budget shows all full-time employees reaching the next milestone." So if you remember, the milestone is kind of like those steps, right? And in between each milestone is a 3% increase. So we're just assuming that every employee is going to reach the next step. And they may not, because if you remember, the step includes longevity, it includes training, and then also making sure that they achieve every goal on their annual performance review. So they may, they may need to be here a minimum of two years between step seven and eight or something, so they may not be up for that step, but we need to plan for the most conservative, so.
That's only eligible employees.
Right.
There's a handful of employees that we know aren't eligible for milestone.
Right.
Because they're at top pay, so they're not included.
Correct. Yes, good point. There's about three of those. So, I mean, we're just saying if, if every eligible employee were to meet that, it would be $27,000 impact on the general fund budget. And then we are planning a 6.75% increase for all part-time employees. That would be seasonals, fire department, and then the part-time employees that we have here in the office. And then 15% increase to health insurance benefits. I always say better save than sorry, so I feel more comfortable with a 15% than a 10% at this point.
And we don't know yet.
No, it's usually the end of October. Yep.
What was the increase?
Last year.
We made a change in provider last year to keep it down.
Yes, and that ended up being about 9.75, I think. Yeah. Otherwise, I think it was going to be 14. So then the Minnesota paid lead premium, it's 0.88% of the entire wages, all wages paid to any employee in the city, including fire department.
And the council.
And the council. So I think they're sticking to their guns with this one, the 0.88%. It was, the percentage was changing and the eligible employees were changing, but I haven't heard anything since the end of July. So I'll let you know if I do, but that would be about $14,500 impact for 2026. And that program, I, I'll give an update on this later, but that program is run by the state of Minnesota. So they make all the decisions on any employee's eligibility, kind of like unemployment. We do have the option to go through a private provider, and so we are getting a couple quotes for that, so more to come on that.
What does that mean, that we wouldn't, we would pay that fee versus the 0.88?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And we would just opt out of the state plan, but you have to like sign something and pay like a small fee saying, "We're going to go through them because they are going to handle it better for us." Yep, a lot of cities are going that, that way. And then a proposed fire department pension increase. Three years ago, the fire department was at $2,600 per year of service. So the city has really gone to bat for the fire department pension on this. So again, Para provides us with a great analysis of their liability saying, "Okay, everybody who's vested and eligible to retire, here's what the city's liability would be at the different service levels," and that's how we would know that we would have to owe $20,000 next year, so.
Can I ask Chief Olshir, how are we doing compared to our neighbor and communities in taking care of this and keeping up?
I would say we're probably right in the middle. If we move towards this, we'll match what Victoria has. Obviously, we're a little bit less than, you know, cities to the east of us, but we're also a little bit higher than big cities to the west of us. So I'd say we're, we're sitting pretty good. But, no, couldn't we always have like more? Obviously.
Especially like I have more years of service.
So Para does provide a report too on their website that anybody can access that shows all of their participants and their annual level.
All right.
Yep. So community outreach, farmer's market, Southwest Transit, Chaska, Parks and Rec, spring cleanup day, and organic collection. I think that's a great thing that the city does. And then the additional law enforcement. So I won't touch much here. Again, 4.3 million in expenses. Public services, that's a big, a big department that we have. We have a lot of streets. The streets are growing, parks, it takes a lot of maintenance. We have people, we have resources, so a lot of our resources go to that. So not going to touch too much on that. So I'm, I have an expenditure analysis here. On the left, it's the total percentage of the 2026 budget and what department. So it's just basically recapping that slide prior. And then the slide, the little visual on the right is comparing the '25 to the '26 expense and how much it increased by department. Sometimes that's kind of interesting. There's always a story for each department, you know, each department, did we have more, you know, do we have more employees this year? Did we lose an employee or, you know, the flood or, you know, so there's always a story. So I can answer questions on that if you'd like me to. So new residential construction by assessment year, we contracted the Carver County Assessor's Office, and so these numbers are always provided by them. The numbers are about 18 months behind because they use comparables and data and why wouldn't I be behind? I mean, that sounds like fun. I'm just kidding. So I'm just kidding, that was not nice. But 2020, it says 2025 because they're using, that's just the number, it gets confusing, but it's 41 million. We're right at about the same as we were last year. You see the spike in 2022 where we had a lot of residential construction grow.
And that's what you're saying, is the 2025 numbers are the homes that were built in late 2023 and 2024?
And that was the number that was provided for us this year.
Or probably late 2022, right? 2023?
October of 2023.
Okay.
So levy considerations, this is, these are the numbers that we used to get you the numbers for tonight. We're looking at a $100,000 increase in the street maintenance fund. We started in 2022 with a $220,000 effort towards street improvements. It's a great, a great program. I've been in cities where their streets are deteriorating and you don't want to drive in them. You don't want your infrastructure to deteriorate, so this is fantastic. And then the capital levy, you can see general capital, fire capital, parks, facilities, we're breaking it out and not just giving it to you as a lump sum, so.
I, the story kind of behind these numbers, by, you know, the, although they, they fund what you'll see in later presentations tonight, the jump that we're making from '25 to '26 or what you see here doesn't mean this will be the final. But then going forward, it allows for like basically a $100,000 increase to capital, so it's at least attempting to mirror what you did for street maintenance. Now, that doesn't mean that needs to be the track you follow, but a little bit of how this was put together, that these numbers aren't exclusively random, they're attempting to get you that jump start so that you can have a pretty consistent incremental increase to fund the plan. Now, that doesn't mean that you'll like all the plans that are presented and you can't make changes based on priorities of what, where you want to be for a number and impact, but that's kind of how it was created.
Here's just a summary of the planned street maintenance for 2026. We're looking at a mill and overlay and would be circle, would be a court, Ramsey Lane in Carver Creek Place North, a local reclamation, Ridge Crest Drive in Carver Creek South, and then we're going to plan our state aid reclamation on Mount Hope Road. And Brent went over these, we don't have a ton of capital purchases planned for next year, but we have some public services, a small extrication equipment, and then the municipal facility special capital for the, the planning of that public services facility. So we talked about having the excess fund balance and a few of those debt service funds, and this is just kind of visualizing that for you. So we, we analyze all of our debt service funds. We model out the payments for the 20, 30 years that we're planning on it, the levies that we're planning on taking in. We always levy for 105% of what we need to make our payments for because that's a statutory requirement. So, and then also when, if we ever do any refunding, those old debt service get closed out into the new refunding, okay? So most of these that are, that have zeros on the right-hand side are because of like refundings, or maybe we close an old bond fund out and then just reclass the balance into those. And so now we're taking a really good strategic approach to analyzing fund balance. We don't want to have $900,000 or something of the sort in 10 years in a, in a bond fund. You know, let's use it now, like let's use the money now. Let's use the cash and let's have some tax relief and then we'll, you know, collect next year normally. So that's what we did. We talked to Northern Securities, and so you can see what our normal bond payment or levy would be and then our tax levy on the other side, so debt service levy, I mean. So if council chooses to go this route, you'll be seeing the resolution just as kind of being transparent and a paper trail for me in the future. So here's a little visual about the general fund levy history. You can see it increasing. I think that's probably standard, but I like the different colors because then you can see the street maintenance separate from the equipment in the general levy. I apologize, the black kind of looks a little different on here. I might change that to like yellow.
Pink always works.
I like pink. And then here's the general fund levy history. I believe I had a slide last year that said about the last 10 years, it's been about an average of just under 11% since, you know, like the last 10 years, the increase. So here's the scenarios Brent was talking about. If council has a desire to reduce it, these are the numbers that you would need to reduce it by. Here's the average valued home. So we went from last year, the assessor said, hey, your average valued home is 433,500, and this year it's 453,100. We received this from Carver County and they're saying that new construction, new residential construction increased by 4.21% or, and then our overall percent change increased by 8% or, and that's including everything, commercial, industrial apartments, residential, and I think egg went down, which would make sense.
That's a function of annexation.
Yes, that makes total sense because we've had a couple of those. Yeah, so this is kind of fun. And then you can see the blue dotted line is just a trend, a trend line of our, the city of Carver tax rates. This is a good slide too. I didn't put the 2026 on here because I didn't have it until an hour ago. I like to share this slide. Carver residents pay $0 in franchise fees. I can go on and on about this if you want, but.
As someone who pays franchise fees?
Yes. And so tax impact. Carver County residents receive a valuation from Carver County and it states their market value, so that's that top number. The market value on this one, our average valued home increased by $19,600. Last year, the residents received a residential exclusion increase. So any homes underneath 517,200, they actually received the exclusion. That number used to be 400 and something thousand. So it was very hard to get an exclusion amount in the city of Carver, but now the average valued home is receiving an exclusion, which reduces their taxable value. And then you get your tax capacity and then our tax rate, and then you multiply that by that and you get.
How do you say our tax rate? Are you looking at that 43.3?
Yes, yes. And that I just calculated today based on the information that the county gave us. So you saw our levy increase was over 11%, but that doesn't mean our tax rate is going to go up by 11%. Those two are not immediately impacted, they do not directly correlate. So I always get nervous when I'm presenting the levy numbers to you folks because they're not directly correlated.
So is the number the 0.98?
Yes, the tax rate went up 0.98. This average valued home is impacted by $135 annually. Okay? Last year it was $90. This is a fun slide, just shows where your money is going on the, based on the 2026 budget. I'll have this all on the website too. And then this is a monthly invoice for the average valued home. It would be paying $11.25 a month for their taxable increase. I have it broken down by perks and maintenance, debt, finance, capital equipment, fire protection, and so on.
You said, it came up on a slide before. City council would be the third one now?
Admin.
Yep.
And that's all I have right now.
And that's the expected, that's the 11.35 or whatever it is per month? That's the increase?
Yes.
Not total?
Not total.
Right.
All right.
So first of all, like well done. I was, when I talked to Brent this morning, I was like, do we have his numbers yet? Can we, can we lie a fire on him? Of course it comes at 3 o'clock, right? But like, probably his doing. Probably, but I've, lots of county, there are lots of cities in Carver County that are meeting tonight, and I'm sure we're really happy for them. So thank you for turning those calls.
Yeah, it was funny.
It's always like, that's the most important part of this for me because looking at it through that lens, kind of to what you had mentioned, it's while the budget goes up by 11 something percent, when the tax rate is really that metric that I'm looking at. I'm happy with this budget. For me, I think the health insurance increase makes me a little bit nervous. I appreciate that you guys spelled out that the paid lead is absolutely an unfounded mandate. I think that that's important. I think the capital accounts, I am happy that we can fund those to the level that they should be and that we kind of always intended them to be, although that's a really big number, right? I remember in 2021, when we were looking at the pavement management plan, and Lori, you probably remember this too, but I think we did $100,000 the first year and it was like, ugh, just a gut punch. And now it has just kind of been a part of our, our culture, of our budget. So it's that first year, remember your first job out of college when your dad's wearing something like mine and told you to put away for retirement and you're like, but I'm making $9 an hour. So it's kind of that, you know, the first cut is the deepest. I am in favor of keeping this for the most part as it is because I'm always worried about what that October, November surprise is going to be. And in past years, I feel like we almost always have something. If it's health insurance or something else, I think there's something else that comes out that causes us a little bit of gut pain if we try to whittle this down too much. So that's it for me for now. Eric, thoughts?
So, you know, going to the slide where we've got the, what it really comes down to for a Carver homeowner, what I heard you say is. What I heard you say is last year it went up $90. This year, housing value has gone up a little bit, cost goes up $135, correct?
That's correct.
So, as a council, can we justify, are we returning the value on that $135 more? We have a lot going on. We have a lot going on with proceeding forward on the new Public Works building. We have, we talked about all the road improvement that has to happen just because, for example, I've been in my neighborhood for 25 years and it needs a lot of work. So a lot of the money is going up in the bluff. I think we're doing the right things in consideration of where we are with Southwest Transit. We've got a $45,000 spend this year, but maybe as we go forward, we're able to offset with the, this county service, so maybe we see some savings there. And this just, this includes everything, but there may be still things that come out of it in the future. So I'm also happy with it. I think I can defend that we're returning that much value to a Carver resident. We all just saw the blurb that came out last week that said that we are the most desirable Southwest suburb to move to. And I think all of the things that we do, all these considerations, make it that place. So I think we are returning that value. I think this gives us a little bit of room. That always seems to be the case. You are adept at finding ways, if there's something we missed, giving us the worst case and maybe refining a little bit more. But I'm just pontificating now. I'm happy with where we are.
Lori, thoughts?
Same, happy where we're at. We're doing more than just, you know, clearing the roads and mowing the grass and just keeping the lights on. We're being good stores, taking care of the things we have, and I really like that we are open, like, being transparent about spending money on the planning. Like, we're also planning for things, so yeah, I feel really good about it.
Kim?
I'm not going to lie, I was surprised it wasn't higher. So that made me feel better knowing how much. No.
Because Tim's got.
Tim's got a wish list over there. So I'm very pleased. I am kind of curious what things are going to look like in October. I really, with, it's very frustrating from the side of the table and also as a resident, seeing these numbers and being told, well, these numbers are where they are because all of the information we actually need to do the budget planning, we don't get until after the budget planning legally has to be done. So I, my big concern is that while a 1% tax increase to an average resident is small on the city's part, I'm always conscious of what the other taxing authorities are doing as well. And so while I'm okay with the levy as it stands now, I reserve the right to not be okay with it when we find out what the county is looking at as well, just because we're not doing this in a vacuum, unfortunately.
And that's what I think is built into our process and why I'm always comfortable keeping the initial draft, the initial draft, because we can discuss this in December and we can make changes at that point to Bob and leave for whatever reason we want, be it this October surprise that I'm concerned about or for, you know, whatever other objects, feelings, feedback we get from residents. We used to do the truth in taxation the same night that we voted in the next year's budget. And we, in the last handful of years, have intentionally split those so that we can do the public hearing, get the feedback from the tens and tens of residents who attend that, but then digest it and take it in and hear what people are saying and then Bob and leave at the final budget, which is two weeks later, so.
Like I said, I'm okay with it where it is right now, but I reserve the right to change my mind as we get more data and more information.
I think we'll plan to do another check-in at your next work session. There tends to be some like information that we get that's shared and then, you know, Lynn and Brent are working on the budget guide for the website. We'll get a hearty summary of this in the council rundown and do some calls to encourage engagement with residents. Thank you.
A lot of work goes into this. Thank you. We're putting into something that we can digest.
Yeah, Brent does a great job, too, so it's fine.
I'll take that.
First of all.
You know you've got the right person.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said that. I do. Yeah, I do. When the numbers come out, right.
33,100.
Okay, let's talk about the draft tenure vehicle and equipment plan update.
So, we've put together, working with Brent and Lynn and Brenda, we've put together a tenure plan and I really enjoyed this process just because of the whole, Brent called it the savings account, really helps us on the fireside try to figure out where we're able to spend money and when we can spend money and those types of things. But every year that kind of comes up and changes. Our goals, looking at all of these priorities that we have, I'm not sure where we're going to go with all of these, but just looking at all the new equipment and stuff that's coming up, I think in this coming year, we're going to look at extrication equipment, then we start dialing into other bigger ticket items and apparatus.
And I, I told Chief Walsh that I kind of helped maybe more than I did with Chief Trimmer just because we unfortunately just kind of, we're happy that Kelly got the retirement he needed, but we kind of dropped.
We talked about.
Dropped Tim in on like the busiest time of the year, so. On the planning cycle, the same thing that you saw with staff on, you know, how we propose, you think about like, you know, frankly, anything kind of beyond like six years, it gets kind of hazy. If you think about, we were kind of using the example of like when you graduate from high school and you're 18, if you had to like think about what you're going to need when you're 28 and all the things that might happen in your life, like where you're going to live and how much that is going to cost and where you're working, it gets a little hard. And so I think we just say that in the, like, we'll have more details on the front end, but I, you know, they're conceptual in some instances, placeholders, knowing that as we get closer every year, the justification process should be more robust and strenuous. So you can see that current plan year, and if you want to scroll down, Brent, into that plan update, I'm gonna, we'll just start off. There you go. Start off with Chief Walsh kind of running through this. I think that the headline editorial-wise for me is, and you don't see this often or frankly in my entire career, I haven't seen this, is that we're actually buying significant pieces of equipment in cash, with the exception of this outlier of a $2 million ladder. But to buy a tanker and then you can see, you know, it's, we're showing that because of the significance in 2036 outside of the plan year, but the way that this plan is built, it's fundamentally paid for in cash now, you know, but that engine costs in 10 years, it might fluctuate a little bit, but fundamentally, we're right there. So Tim and Vina just kind of run through the equipment. I think that may be a good place to start.
Yeah. So like I said, next year, we're looking at a set of extrication equipment. This is equipment that currently, we have hydraulic stuff, that we have a portable pump, hoses, those types of things get tangled in when we're doing stuff. We're going to look at going to battery operated. It's easier to handle.
And they've reached the point where they're comparable, haven't they?
Yes, very much so. Actually, very impressive with all of the new designs and metals that the new cars are using, these battery operated tools are excellent.
Did you guys get new extrication equipment a few years ago?
Yep, a couple of years ago. The Lyons.
Say, I remember it coming through the Lyons desk.
Yep.
Okay.
And I can pretty much say we use that on almost every crash we go on. One of those tools is getting used for something. Then in 2027, we're looking at replacing our command vehicle. This, the command vehicle we're looking at replaces a 2013. That replaced a vehicle that was in a crash back in September, I think it was, or not September, because we're not in September yet.
You've already replaced the vehicle, haven't you?
Yeah. But this one, it was a 2015, the one that got the crash, and we ended up purchasing this one, which is a 2013, so we're looking at replacing that one.
Tim, is there a mileage threshold that you're looking at before you return or replace vehicles?
With the other departments out there, some look at mileage, some look at just years. And we're trying to kind of figure that out, but right now, we're trying to look at and put in place that we replace those vehicles every 10 years. As we grow, the mileage is going to go higher and higher, so maybe we look at changing that around a little bit. There are some departments out there that are looking at these programs. I'm not sure what we want to do with that, but that might be something to look into. But right now, we're trying to go with a 10-year plan. Yep. 2028, we're looking at replacing our rescue truck, which basically goes out on 58% of the calls that we have. We're looking at changing that to a Tahoe or a Suburban, more for running medicals where we can have all of our equipment inside the cab where it can be warm for those winter months and air-conditioned during the summer months currently. If we use a pickup and it sits in the back of the pickup, so in cold weather, it doesn't really get that warm. At the same time, what we're going to do is take that rescue truck and move that back to our Grass 11 and use that as our newer grassroots, because it's got a crew cabin, so it's got four doors, more room for four firefighters. Then we would take an, our Grass 12, which is another pickup, we would move that to a utility where we'd be able to use that to run around town, run errands, take it to school. We could take that vehicle to other fire scenes, either mutual aid or our own to pick up contaminated gear, contaminated hose, bring that stuff back to the station and wash it. Along with all of that, we're looking at replacing our Grass 12, which is a UTV, and that trailer, going with something that's more updated, a bigger cab. The one that we currently have was not made, the suspension was not made to haul water. And so we've had some issues with that, breaking some sprockets and whatnot, but it's, it works. But the newer stuff that is out there, they specifically make one for the fire service that has beefed up suspension. It's much easier on the machine itself that it can carry water. We would also use that in some of our, the Wild Rift Refuge, if we have to go out there for some reason. We've got some medical stuff on there. We've got a place that we can put the patient if they have to lay down, we can put them on there. So we're looking at updating that, along with the trailer. We're looking at a trailer that can sit down on the ground, so it's much easier for us to drive things on and off. Yeah, that kind of covers the 2028 question. 2029, we're looking at replacing another command vehicle, one of our 2015s. So we're looking at replacing that. Currently, we've got 63,000 miles and we'll have some miles on that when we get to that point. 2030, we're not looking at any purchases as of today. And then when we get into 2031, we're looking at replacing another command vehicle. That would be our 2017 Ford Explorer. Currently, that has 49,000 miles, so we'll have some on there. Looking at an additional utility vehicle, it's kind of a placeholder, looking at it today on what, where we're going to grow and what we're going to need at that time. And then along with that is the ladder truck. This ladder truck is of, right now, I've got an estimate of approximately $2 million to get, but that would replace a 41-year-old piece of apparatus that we got.
Will we retain that or will we sell it?
The 41-year-old one?
Yeah.
That one we would sell. Yep. And that one would go to auction and hopefully at least, there's a lot of people interested in that truck because it's very unique. It's one of the first trucks that was built for the city to fit in the old fire station downtown, so it's really short. A lot of people are really enticed with that and want to purchase that, so.
Or a department or like?
Kind of a collector's. Yep. There's, it's.
There's a lot of people, like clubs out there nowadays that have these retired rigs and they'll bring them and do things with them, which is kind of nice.
Bugs free. Let's come with my place and fire it hard.
So we're looking at replacing that engine. You can see the current Engine 13 there, that's the one I'm referencing. We're looking at replacing that with a ladder truck. And some people get kind of confused in regards to when I say ladder truck, they're looking at these big monstrous things that some cities have. The City of Chesapeake just purchased a nice ladder truck for their city. We've got one in Waconia. We've got one in Shakopee, these bigger ones, a tandem axle and that kind of stuff. We are not looking for something like that currently. We're looking at something that's a little bit smaller and it's not, it's a little bit bigger than Engine 13, but it has the aerial device and we look at, put a platform on there so we can do rescues, work out of that, so we don't have to put ladders and stuff on the building, so it's much safer to work out of that type of thing. But one of the big key things is getting that elevated water stream. With today's homes, the way they're built, you're lucky if you have three or four minutes to exit a home these days if you have a significant fire. Back, you know, 20 years ago, you probably had eight or 10 minutes. Not anymore. And with the way houses are being built and as tight as they're being built together, getting one of these trucks up that you can spray water on different areas, different homes, is a huge help for all of us in the fire service.
I have a question on the 2031 ladder truck. It's three stories or four stories? How?
The one there, the example is 107 foot, so you'll get up, you know, pretty close to three stories. It really depends on how close you can get to the building. But like I said, in our box alarm system, when we have structure fires, automatically Chesapeake's brig and theirs over to help do that part, but this would be an initial response for us. 2032, that is when our SCBA air packs would come up. So we're looking at replacing those at that time.
Those good for 10 years?
Right around that 15 mark, that's when it gets super expensive because then you'd have to buy all brand-new bottles because they expire. And so you're better off just replacing the whole pack with technology changes and safety features that come out in those SCBAs. You're just better off changing the whole thing out and getting the newest style out there. 2033, we're looking at replacing the used apparatus that we purchased. What was it? I don't even remember now.
2024, it says.
Yeah, so we bought that one from the city of Waconia. It's a 1989. It does carry 3,500 gallons for us, which is, is super nice, but that truck will be 44 years old in 2033. And so we're looking at replacing that. We'll still have a significant area that we cover that does not have hydrants, so we need something that can carry that additional water out to us until all of our mutual aid departments come in and help. And then, command vehicle number four is kind of a placeholder. We're hoping by then we can get a daytime duty officer in, in play, so we'll need a vehicle for that person to take that task on, but we're not sure how far that's going to go and when that might happen, but we'll put something in there. And then 2034 and 35, currently, we don't have anything in, in the plan.
And that was somewhat intentional to build the cache in 2036 to replace Engine 12.
Correct.
Can you talk me through the duty crew vehicles, the command vehicles? There's three right now. The chief, where did the two others go?
So right now, we've got three command vehicles. One really runs with our captains, so that runs a duty crew or a duty officer program from 9:00 PM until 6:00 AM. With that is a duty chief, so it'll be one of the, the fire chiefs that help. So there's two people responding to a call. So when you're running the duty officer program, there's two firefighters that are going instead of 30. The other command vehicle, the chief one normally uses is kind of day-to-day stuff, but when I go on vacation and stuff, we pass that off to somebody else so that we can try to, how do I want to say this? Get experience to some of the other captains and the other chiefs to respond to calls.
Okay. Thank you. That's it?
Questions? Maybe it is too small to show up in here, but what about other technologies? Do we have a current generation drone with infrared capability?
We do. We bought that last year. We bought that last year, or no, beginning of this year, and we have currently two pilots and we have two firefighters currently going through the pilot program. We have not, we've used it a couple of times on some calls, but we have not officially put it into service just because we wanna get a couple more people into the program. And then we've gotta build that program to, alright, how do we want to send this out? How many people are gonna go, those types of things? We still have to build that portion out. So hopefully by the end of the year, early part of next year, we'll have that up and running.
Great.
But yeah, it's, it's been fun to play with and learn.
I was at COMEX at Fort Ripley this morning and we got to see current gen in action and it's just amazing how much-
It is.
More capable they are than just a few years ago.
It's amazing that the technology and how we can use that device, like we talked about aerial devices and getting up and above, and how those help incident commanders determine what's going on, where some of those hotspots are, where is secure resources. It's, it's a, it's a great tool.
Something I think about with those drones and our office has a drone power around as well and it's relatively new, but it's, it's good to hear that a little fire department's doing it, because I just think of things like, not too long ago, we had a medical on the trail area, we didn't know where this individual was. So I mean, if you had that capability to have it for a missing person, lost child, that type of thing too, it'd be great.
Yep.
Even Chesapeake was using theirs last summer with the floods.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Multifaceted. Alright, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, talking now about the draft 10-year vehicle, um, equipment plan update. I'm just looking at the time, I didn't have-
Parks? We can do parks, we can, I can, 10 minutes.
Okay. Never mind, let's do the draft 10-year parks plan update.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
I'm gonna excuse myself in this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Alright, parks, thank you. We put this together, me, Brent and Erin and Lynn, just kinda give a 10-year outlook of parks. So first of all, we have, there's kinda two categories for the parks. There's new parks, which are funded through the park dedication, and then there's kind of the park updates, which is funded through the park improvement fund. So we'll be talking about a couple different parks, so they get funded from different sources. So our plan goals, just assessment of current park assets and future needs as we continue to grow, a guide to inform the annual budget process, and our financial planning goals and objectives, and then we anticipate our park needs, create fund and recreational opportunities, and try to deliver these park projects in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. So again, we're working with the, kinda the planning cycle that we're all familiar with now, after the fifth time. So plan summary is really kind of the park funding, we're gonna try to build that up so we have some cash to start making decisions. And then there's a couple bigger park dedication type projects that are gonna be coming along in the near future, maybe four or five years. But that's kinda what we're thinking about. A big thing is we have playground structures already out there and it's, how long are they gonna last, how are we gonna replace them? So that's a big portion of this plan is replacing our existing assets.
Andrew, how many years do we get on a playground?
I would say 20. So we, this is the current plan, the only thing on that current plan from last year was the park shelter replacement in 2029. So we can fast forward to the proposed plan, you know, the landings start showing up in 2029, 2030, and that'll be funded out of the park dedication. The community park shelter, we bumped back to 2031 just due to funding concerns. And then 2023, 2024, or 2034, we start getting into these playground replacements as we build up our cash reserves on those. And then like always, we'll keep monitoring other things, depot playground, community park ice rink, Creekside Park Phase Two, whatever else we can think about. So here's kinda the funding mechanisms. 2026 is a contribution of 75,000, going up to 100 next year and increasing it year to year after that. But right now, you know, cost estimate of replacing community park shelters is about 950,000, so that would use a lot of our resources for one project. Playgrounds, depending on the type of playground you wanna get, they can range greatly, so. And then we're looking at the park dedication. Erin could probably speak a little bit more to that than I can.
So thinking about park dedication, the most recent project that we worked on was Creekside, so now we're starting to think about the landing as Creekside starts to wrap up. We had a really impactful conversation during the strategic plan to get some additional community engagement about the landing, so that work. We have a review of the parks master plan coming up for the city council. I'll work with the planning commission over the winter to look at that document. So we'll be asking you in September for some guiding principles for what you're looking for. Planning commission will take that work, hopefully run with it, will do some enhanced community engagement, probably starting '27 and then '29, we'll start to do site prep. So we've been talking at a staff level about a phased approach where phase one for the project could be removal of the building, construction of like the parking lot and bathrooms, knowing that the trail is going to be fully functional then. Bathroom would probably be appreciated by many, and then we can move into park features hopefully in 2030. We keep a really close eye on park dedication, just based on plots that we see coming in, we can forecast it pretty well knowing the number of projects, but the years can be tricky. Park dedication comes in at the time of final plot, so it can sometimes take several years to get full park dedication from a project, but that's what we're targeting right now for our next project using park dedication funds.
So as we fast forward, kinda yeah, like Erin, speaking 2029, it might be the first year we have that fun balance to start moving on stuff on the landing that's kinda proposed to be a planning year is the amount of information that we're gonna have to gather and plans put together for that. 2030 would be construction year. And 2031 would be looking at replacement of the community park shelter. A lot of questions about that as to what we want it to look like, what we want it to function as, what's the use of that park moving forward. 2020, 32, nothing, and then we get into the playground replacements. So community park, if that's the park we're gonna choose, that might be our more focused park, the bigger park, the bigger playground, you know, that's, can be anywhere up to $500,000 to replace, so. Then we get into the other parks, Lyons Park, 300,000, and Olson Park. So both community park and Lyons Park were put in 2002, 2003, so they've been in the system for over 20 years already. And the guys, when there's parts that are breaking, they are tough to find replacements at that point, cause these companies that make these playgrounds, they just, just continue to that line and move on to the next one. It's kinda like cars, trying to find old parts for your 1960 whatever, I mean, it's good stuff.
Kind of footwork.
Or finger.
Okay, in the interest of time, thank you. Any thoughts on this, comments, questions?
I'm happy that we have this plan in front of us, it's, just helps me visualize where the meeting is going, so thanks for the effort.
Yeah, I think this looks good. I'm wild by how much the playground costs, but it's kind of a cost of difference.
Are we buying the ones made of straw and not the ones made of brick?
Is there a tip off model we can use instead?
I can get crazy, couldn't you start talking about the surfacing? If you wanna keep doing wood chips or do you wanna do port-in-place rubber? You know, port-in-place rubber can't be 40 bucks a square foot. That's just for the surfacing, does not, the equipment and the installs are intensive because everything's gotta be at the certain height and there's fall distances, there's a lot of aspects of going into park equipment in 2025, so.
Thoughts, comments? Alright, thank you. Let's see, we've got two minutes. Do we have any council requests? Okay, I have just one, and this is not one that you know about. Patty from Bonfle Baskets is gonna be at our meeting tonight. We, against all odds, won the 19 night challenge, thanks only to a very generous donation that the car reliance made. So I brought some very clean-up-able streamers that are gonna stick around, and I'm hoping that we can have like a little Facebook moment where, I'm hoping to get some help from staff to take a video of it and have her kind of like, it's gonna be completely be a son of a woman, have her be like, I'm proud to announce, and then like we all throw the streamers and celebrate, so.
Awesome.
Are you guys on board with that?
So are we supposed to act surprised or are she surprised?
Yes, you are gonna act surprised.
We don't, I don't know how to act that much.
The same reaction that I saw in your faces when I said it 20 seconds ago. I'm down with that?
Yeah.
I'm gonna pretend I didn't remember. Okay, alright, then we will hold the city manager's report and then the draft 10-year vehicle and equipment plan update for the regular meeting.
I don't have a report, so.
Then we'll consider that done.
Oh, it's a quick two minutes.
Yeah, okay, great. Perfect, we had a motion.
A second.
And a second, to all those that voted, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion passed.
If we did well on collections and if we were, I thought-